Welcome to the regular town council meeting, town of Cave Creek, Arizona for Monday, June fifth, twenty twenty-three. Meeting is now called to order. You have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Ogerton.
Here.
Councilmember Bunch.
Here.
Councilmember Elkhorn. Councilmember McGuire.
Present.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Present.
Vice Mayor Roy.
Here.
Mayor Morris.
Present. First thing on the agenda is an executive session, council discussion establishing performance objectives for the town manager for the year, for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, beginning July one, twenty twenty-three, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four pursuant to A R S section thirty-eight dash four thirty-one dash zero three, capital A, one. Do you have a motion to move?
So moved.
Conduct into executive session in a second.
See it six o'clock.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. We're now in executive session. Oh, the town council meeting is back in session. We're at the pledge allegiance. David Phelps.
Pledge allegiance, I would die in the United States of America. Two thirty-five, for which it stands. Elimination under God, in this law, with liberty and justice for all.
Public announcements. I have none. Does anyone in council have something they'd like to announce?
You know, we should note that things are drying out, and we can't prevent everybody from doing things that they think are safe and turn out not to be safe. But please, I hope everybody in the community is thinking about what they're doing when they're doing.
And the town still has the the extra firemen. We have two extra firefighters with the brush truck in addition to the four firefighters on the bumper truck. So we have wrote double the personnel and double the vehicles we've historically had in town this time of year. It's windy and dry. Called to see called public.
Ron Sova.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, Ron Sova. Cave Creek, Core Town Resident. Just a couple of brief things. Last week, Monday, was Memorial Day, as I'm sure everyone recalls. And it's a day set aside to honor all our military personnel who died while serving in the United States Armed Forces. The town of Carefree has had for several years program, and they pay tribute to the fallen military members by hosting a ceremony at the Cave Creek Memorial Cemetery, where forty-one veterans are currently interred. Many groups such as the Boy Scouts, D A R, Cave Creek American Legion Post Thirty-four, Veterans Heritage Project, just to name a few, are involved in that ceremony. And I realize that the Cave Creek Museum recently had a groundbreaking ceremony for a veteran's memorial garden in which even the mayor of Carefree, Mayor Crane, came for that groundbreaking. I'd like to ask our town to pursue working with our neighboring town, i.e. Carefree, to make that Memorial Day tribute an exceptional event and make it known for its significance. Our town is currently presenting plaques to many iconic town core buildings and businesses. And I feel it worthy that we also consider the service to our country made by the iconic men and women of our military on Memorial Day. I've got a program from the past program. I'll leave it with our town clerk, and she can make copies and hopefully distribute it to you if you're interested. And then, on another note, while I'm on a military theme, I just wanted to remind everybody what tomorrow is. I know it's June sixth. And I'm sure by the age of the average person in here, you should remember what June sixth nineteen forty-four was, which was D-Day. And it was, in my opinion, one of the most important dates in American history. Under General Eisenhower's command, approximately a hundred and sixty thousand troops stormed the five beaches of Normandy with an armada, which was still is the world's largest assemblage of any ships, totaling as many as seven thousand and over twenty-four hundred aircraft taking part. And I'd just like to say in closing, if that invasion were to have failed, our country may well be in a different place today. So I ask that we all take a moment tomorrow and reflect on the significance of the day and its importance to the world as we know it today. That's my history lesson for today. Thank you.
Thank you. David Phelps.
Evening, Mayor and Council. David Phelps, Town Resident for some time. I'd like to go over. I know that many of you received the letter that I wrote to Luke on the twenty-fifth. We'd like to go over a couple of things outside that letter that I think are important to understand. I know that the town is maker said at some point in time there will be an E-session about that. And so since you guys didn't see enough urgency to squeeze it into tonight's agenda, even though you had cancellation, I think it's important that we do know some of the things that have happened. So, yeah, there you go. So I wanted to read from the correspondence June seventeen twenty twenty-one. It's important to know that this project's been underway for a couple of years now. And on June seventeen twenty twenty-one, a letter to Luke from the applicant. Yes, the applicant states that he just met again with the two contractors who are working on the project for us. They're very concerned about safety in terms of the state of the roof, electrical plumbing and plumbing, as well as some of the structural issues around the patio. I attached the inspection report because I didn't think you had seen this before, and it's bad. They suggest they reach out right away and ask if we can get started on these issues and get some feedback on the overall plans. There are some suggestion that it might be better to build a new house just northeast of the current structure, which we wanted to avoid avoid doing. But if there is no path forward, we do need to consider this option and change tracks. Would appreciate your response. They asked me to meet with the town's building person at the S A P, but I wanted to run this through you first. Thanks. Steve Greenberg, I believe he's the owner. So then we jump to a few days later, and we have a response from Luke stating that "Good afternoon, Lori and Steve. This is June twenty-two." Just a few days later. "I hope you are both well. I am also looking forward to meet meeting with you again tomorrow." "I have looked through the attached resolution and pre annexation development agreement." "I was part of that development agreement. I was part of the E-sessions of the development agreement before it was introduced to the applicant's prior owners." "I have exchanged emails with R J." "I believe that's county representative." "And while there still may be a possibility to conduct a lot line adjustment, he expressed some legal issues related to the conservation easements involving the county and the state that could be lengthy and costly to abandon. After consideration of his concerns and concert with what you have provided below, I believe there is no, there is a way to entitle a rehabilitation, a rehabilitation of the structure within the confines of the zoning ordinance." And that's important because we use zoning when we make these decisions. Worst case scenario would be a non-conforming use modification permit. That is the legal pathway for remodeling this house. Modification permit which requires town council approval. Best case, and what we can discuss in more detail tomorrow, would be administrative approval as a component of the building permit. "I apologize for having such a positive outlook on the possibility of an L L A. It is my nature to consider most challenges as having a simple resolution. The town will continue to work with you to restore this property and your desired use." So what was happening here in twenty twenty-one, Ernie was here, Catherine was here, Bob was here, Tom was here. There was a deal where they could trade a Spurcross Ranch fostered by Luke, and I wanted to know from each of you individually, did you support that? Was there consensus? Was there an E-session? Because I never heard about it. And I try to listen. Other than that.
Mr. Phelps, do wrap it up, please.
Yeah, it says minute twenty-five minute. Other than that, I took the time to review chapter eleven in your zoning ordinance that strongly suggests before your recession, you look at it so that you can ask articulate questions of legal counsel. Feeling legal counsel will give the normal pushback in defense of whatever the zoning administrator wants. We try to get. And that's only a four-page document. I'm hoping that you guys can take a few minutes to to review that before your E-session with your legal counsel. Also, I was able to copy out of the file this non-stamped drawing of the demolition demolition permit. All this area in here is within the setback. This area is within the non-disturbance.
Mr. Phelps, this really isn't appropriate for this for public, your your time.
Respectfully, Mayor, what's not appropriate is this has been in the hot for two years, and you guys don't have time to deal with this.
This is public comment. This is this is your time for general issues. This is this is real specific, and we don't see, we can't see the document. So your three minutes are up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob.
Anna Marcelo.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Anna Marcelo, Cave Creek citizens. Wow. I'm I'm shocked that our zoning planning administrator director, Luke, would say something like, the worst scenario is we will have to go before town council. You are the best scenario. You are elected by the people. We vote you in. You have the opportunity to hear from your citizens and their comments from this audience. The best scenario is in a decision by you because it becomes a legislative action. That means your citizens can take it to referendum to overturn your vote if they so decide. The best scenario, Luke says, was an administrative decision by permit administrative. You kill the referendum opportunity for your citizens. I didn't come to talk about that, but the opportunity arose. Please remember, legislative, you represent us. We, on several occasions, three times in thirty years only, we've held a referendum in Cave Creek to overturn a council vote. So I came to talk about Arizona statute, A R S, you might want to write it down, thirty-eight dash four three one dot oh one. Meetings shall be open to the public. Section H is inherited. A public body may make an open call to the public during a public meeting, subject to reasonable time, place, manner restrictions, to allow individuals to address the public body on any issue within the jurisdiction of the public body not currently on the agenda. At the conclusion of an open call to the public, individual members of the public body, that's you, may respond to criticism made by those who have addressed the public body, may ask staff to review a matter, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. That's the power you have, and that's the power you give us to stand up here. So you have the right to ask staff to look into anything that you hear and call to the public. You have the right to ask that it be put on an agenda item. Those are powerful things that you have that because you represent us and we speak through you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall.
No additional speakers.
The town manager report.
Mayor, members of council, I just wanted to let you know we are wrapping up the the capital projects for the end of the year, and there is a road paving project on Twenty-Sixth Street from Saddle Mountain Road north to the end of the pavement that has begun. And they they did the ground asphalt pulverizing the road today. The process will continue, and hopefully we'll have the paving on Wednesday and temporary striping by Friday. We did receive our specialty rescue vehicle this week, the U T V, which is used for off-road trail rescues and those. The funds came from the Firehouse Sub Foundation. They were a grant to the town to the tune of about twenty-eight thousand dollars. And once we complete the equipping and receive the stretcher that will go on that, that will be in service in the next ten days to two weeks or so. So that's good with the heat high. We're hoping that the new signage at Spurcross Ranch Conservation Area will deter folks from making some decisions that make it difficult to to hike. So we've got signage out there and the new rescue vehicle, and we help people hike safely and take their water and return back halfway. Once you've gotten half your water is gone, those kinds of things. So it's really important to follow those safety guidelines. So.
On the consent agenda tonight is a deed of gift from the Ventucci, I hope I'm pronouncing it correctly, Enterprises LLC for public sewer easement on parcel two eleven dash one four dash zero four four E. Number two is approval of the May one night twenty twenty-three regular council meeting minutes. Number three is approval of the May sixteen twenty twenty-three regular council meeting minutes. Does anyone wish to pull one of those items from the consent agenda? If there's a motion to approve them.
So move.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes six zero. General agenda items, council discussion, possible approval of a community grant to the Cave Creek Museum for the amount of twenty thousand dollars presented by the Cave Creek Museum Executive Director.
Mr. Mayor, Evelyn will present on behalf of the museum. I did just want to make note that in the past, there has been a ten thousand dollar community grant to the museum. This year, they are in need of funds for repair to the roof, and we do have funds available in this fiscal year for that twenty thousand dollar request should council approve.
Thank you. Evelyn Johnson, Cave Creek Museum. Mayor Morris, Vice Mayor Roy, a council members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you. I hope that you all have the annual report and have had a chance to to review it. All right. Those are really some big highlights in there and some huge accomplishments on part of the board and our volunteers. So Cave Creek is a destination. People don't happen to come to Cave Creek. They plan their trip. So that's a good thing. The museum is also a destination, partially due to our location, which is also a good thing. We get interested folks. We would love to have drop-in visitors, but they plan their visits that come to see us. This season, the Cave Creek Museum welcomed over seventy-five hundred visitors from eighty-three Arizona zip codes, forty-five states, and ten plus foreign countries. At the end of the season, we averaged thirty-six people a day. And we're also welcomed during the season over a thousand students to our, through the Cave Creek Unified School District, bringing all of their classrooms, classrooms, and third grade classes to the museum for an experience and our family fun days. We are the town's only cultural institution honoring Cave Creek history. Visitors often ask, what can they see while they're in the area? Where is a good place to eat? We enjoy directing them to our many establishments here. And of course, we also get to recommend a place to shop if we don't happen to have what they're looking for in our museum store. We archive artifacts of historical significance and modern relevance. We and we are collecting oral histories through a grant with the Desert foothills library that will also add to our archive of first-person stories. Some people go, what's, why do I care about history? History matters because it gives us a sense of stability, a sense of memory, and a sense of belonging. As entities, towns are much like people. They're living and changing, learning and growing. A town without history is one with amnesia, and its people feel lost and alone. A town that values history tells us how we tells us we know where we stand because others prepared and stood here before us. History tells potential businesses that it's a good place to do business because so many have been successful here. For one person considering moving here, they want to know a sense of stability. History gives us that. Without a sense of stability, without history, they feel like, oh, they're here today, but maybe gone tomorrow. With emphasis on history and reverence for those that went before us, our forefathers accomplished to that. We have confidence that our work will be revered in what we do and will not go in vain. Our Arizona gold mining experience has been to capacity crowds all season. Even with offering two a month, they run the second Saturday and the fourth Saturday. The income from that program has fully funded the maintenance on the mining campus this season. Remember, this is the only remaining stamp mill that's fully operational and operating in its original mining districts in the country, making it of national and international significance. Our Cave Creek Museum presents adult learning or adult discovery series. Each of these offerings this season have been to capacity. Now, capacity is not huge because it's in our historic church, which holds, according to Fire Code, forty-nine. Then there's a couple of times we might have been on the edge a little bit. We've had topics of geology, Tomb of the Unknown Soldier, Arizona water that was presented by Councilman McGuire, and he, we're doing a summer series with the Arizona water with Councilman McGuire, and he had we had thirty-two signed up, and I think we had twenty-four or so show up on Saturday. Our next one is June seventeenth. We've accomplished our strategic plan this year. We began the project in the fall, and we gather community input and stakeholders to the museum. It is now on our website for your reading pleasure. We have, we support the local landmarks project and providing historical contact and context. We have in your package, you received the information on for the gazebo roof. The gazebo itself looks very beautiful now. As long as you look from about this high down. Don't look up. Don't stand in the distance. The roof is a fifty-two-ish year old roof. And the tiles are about the thickness, the its shape are about the thickness of three sheets of paper. Unfortunately, that part is an eight to ten thousand dollar restoration. And we're looking at other options, but so far we've not been able to found anything that is any less expensive and still gives it its original look. We also have to be concerned with the the weight of the tiles. And it is being used by wedding parties. So we have added some little twinkle lights that are L E D and will make it even more special for that evening wedding. The other project is a restoration, the last two walls of our historic church that we've replaced one wall each year from in August of twenty-one. We, along with many other people, had damage in that monsoon storm. Our church was flooded. We had to do mold remediation. And so what we've done is do that front wall. Then we did the the east wall. We've got two walls left. This is the time of the year that we can do that kind of project and not impede or deter from our visitors. So those are the projects that we're looking at. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council.
I have a comment. You want, okay. I was really pleased to see the financials from the museum. There's something we haven't had enough information. I understand you have a new board member who has expertise in both the town and in financial manners. So is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Former vice mayor.
Yes, David Smith has joined our our Board of Directors. And it's exciting to have him. I'm looking forward to his counsel and and helping us have more user-friendly financials. They're a little bit cumbersome. You can't just look and tell a number. You have to do some math. So we're gonna work on on doing so.
And the museum has a whole new board. So I think that's that's significant in showing that the museum, the museum had a couple of tough years, and I think there's been more. I I hope I'm not out of place, Bob, in saying this. I hope I hope that I think there's been more than a recovery from my point of view, aside from having a few questionable speakers. That the museum has more than recovered. It is, in my opinion, come back very strongly.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It's a it's a team effort. It takes all of us.
Yes, in terms of your request, Evelyn, the, could you describe or explain to us what the twenty thousand dollars will cover?
Definitely the roof of the gazebo. And it will go as far as we can. The the it'll, the rest of it will be applied to the sixteen thousand dollars that's still in need for the church to finish those last two walls. But that is our goal.
Project oriented rather than yes, staff or employee.
Absolutely. It's, there is, there is no salary. There's nothing in that. It is project oriented.
Okay, thank you, Bert.
Other questions? I guess that's it. Thank you, Evelyn.
Thank you.
I see a great many board members in the audience. Welcome to the museum. At this point, we're ready for a motion to approve the community grant.
I have a couple of comments.
Excuse me. I missed that.
Stephen Greenberg.
Comment.
The council, mayor, vice mayor, and the staff for the support of the museum. I don't think I need to tell you how important the museum is and how it represents the character and history of Cave Creek. It's a very special town. As I travel through the valley, I've lived here for twenty-six years. The valley, as we know, it's disappearing. It's becoming Los Angeles, becoming traffic and dense development. And Cave Creek remains a portion of the valley that has its history and its look and its feel intact. And I just want to encourage us to continue to support the museum and the unique character of Cave Creek. Evelyn outlined the visible aspects of the museum, which are numerous and fantastic, but there's an invisible side of the museum as a community center. How many volunteers do we have officially?
A hundred and three.
Hundred and three minors dinner.
Hundred and seventy-five.
In attendance. In attendance.
And sold out, as I understand.
Yes.
Yeah.
Capacity. It touches the entire town, and it's really the fabric of the town. What do you want the people know? The dream team and the stamp mill, recognized internationally as accomplishing an amazing historical task of restoring and running a stamp mill. The gold mining experience is one of the most incredible historical experiences, and a lot often focuses on children. So I'm just here to thank you for the support from the staff and everyone else, and continue to ask you to continue to support the museum. And I think this twenty thousand dollars will go along, and I'm going to challenge you to add a zero and look at doing something like two hundred thousand dollars in the future. Thank you. Thank you.
No additional comments.
With that, we're ready for motion.
Or Tom.
Go ahead.
I'd love to do this. Yeah, a motion to approve community grant in the amount of twenty thousand to the Cave Creek Museum.
Second. Uh, this is financial, so a real call.
Comments?
Excuse me, comments?
I, I just want to say that, uh, as, as a, a young fifth grade kid in Denton, Texas, I spent many, many hours. In the North Texas State Universal Museum because I wasn't even worth a darn at baseball. So I have a real love for museums and, and, uh, and am real proud. And I think that's a shining, shining beacon for the town of Cave Creek. The, the Cave Creek Museum.
Second, well said. I had my chance.
Anyone else? Counsel? Uh, I have a dusty joint session. Yeah, I, I have a comment. That is, uh. The, the, the town finances are quickly improving and growing up. And there are a lot of things as a town that we don't do. Uh, that other towns do. Uh, the library is here tonight, for example, and, uh, and museum and. At some point, the town needs to transition over to adding more culture and amenities, uh, to our town. Because the problems will be in the rearview mirror someday. And, uh, the museum is certainly, uh, one of the signature areas of town. We have the library, uh, of course also. And we're just lucky to have someone who's working that hard to preserve a history. So I, I, I support this and. I'm sorry I missed the dinner this year. Roll call.
Councilmember Bunch?
Did you say me?
You did.
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Ray.
Yes.
Councilmember Ogerton.
Hi.
Mayor Morris.
Hi.
Major passes, passes, uh, six to zero. We're on to, uh, council discussion, no, item number two, council discussion, possible approval. A resolution number two, R two oh two three dash twelve, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement. Between the town of Cave Creek and the Maricopa County Library District. For the town's participation in a library assistance program involving the purchase of library materials. Presented by the town manager at the request of the executive director of the Desert Foothills Library.
Mayor, uh, Vice Mayor, members of council. Um, the town has a long history of supporting, um, the local library. Uh, back when we supported the, um, with a reciprocal borrowing, um, program. Uh, which established the library assistance program and. That turned into an intergovernmental agreement with Maricopa County Library District back in two thousand thirteen. And we renew those, um, IGAs every five years. So. Um, we are up for renewal, um, for this five years and the library director Deborah. Executive Director Deborah Lee is here and could speak to you about, um. How this, uh, impacts the library and the, and their patrons. Um, I'd just like to point out, um, I, I, the council found. Uh, a correction that's needed in the, um. The, the, the third whereas of the intergovernmental agreement where it references that the town owns the library. So we're just going to strike that. I did. Right, and, uh, the executive director is aware of that as well. And I think we can just correct that with a. In the motion. So with that, if you have something to add.
Thank you very much, Deborah Lee, Executive Director at Desert Foothills Library. And thank you for that overview, Carrie. The way this, uh, lap program works, and if you don't know, I'd be happy to explain. Um, for every new library card holder we get at our library. Who lives in Maricopa County, uh, we get dollar signs attached to that person. And in the end, we get, uh, funds. From Maricopa County so that we can build our collection at the library. So it's sort of a, they have this mega formula that they use and, um. In the end, we end up having a relationship with a company where we purchase our, our items. And it's almost like a credit that we use, um, for those funds. So. My apologies for bringing this document that had, um, this information in it that didn't belong. I should have done my homework. Um, didn't quite get to that until this, early this afternoon. So I understand. What you're referring to there and I appreciate you, um, striking that so that we can move forward.
Any questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I'll be comment on this.
I have no one, no one wishing.
But the comments, we're looking for a motion.
I'll make the motion. This is a motion to approve resolution R two zero two three dash twelve. A resolution of the mayor and the town council, the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona. Authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the town of Cave Creek. And the Maricopa County Library District for the town's participation in a library assistance program. Involving the purchase of library materials.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion passes six zero. Um, we are on to item number three, and as I understand it, uh, I, I don't remember three. We don't have all the materials for item three.
That's correct. Uh, council had asked for some information that we were unable to get by today. So we are asking you just to take a letter, continue.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that item number three be tabled.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes six zero.
Fire action, I assumed your, your motion included the, the deletion of the two words.
Ye- yes, it just said that.
Thank you.
Execute an intergovernmental agreement, so.
But if the library's.
If it's not, I'll strike it myself. So next item is council discussion, possible approval contract with buildings, uh, building by Don Fredericks Incorporated. For construction services to build restrooms at the Cave Creek Rodeo Grounds in Memorial Arena. For an amount up to three hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars presented by the Development Services Director.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of council. The town in approximately twenty twenty commissioned a restroom building design that was completed. Almost three years ago to the day, actually. Um, the town has since, uh, more recently this year, uh, gotten a design for a septic system. Uh, to be placed out of the rodeo grounds to accommodate a new restroom facility. That is currently, um, filed for a permit in review with the Environmental Services Department of Maricopa County. Uh, the town also, uh, released a request for qualifications, uh, to obtain, um, contract services to construct the restrooms. Uh, we received two responses to that. Uh, both extremely, uh, qualified general contractors. Building by Don Fredericks, uh, is a, a local general contractor. Uh, that's worked in the town for many, many years. Uh, the other was, um, Sonoran Crest. Who is currently the, um, general contractor for the new food bank facility that's going to be going on Carefree Highway. Uh, the difference in price, however, was substantial. You have before you a motion to approve up to three hundred eighty-seven thousand. Uh, the other bid that we received was seven hundred and sixty thousand. So, uh, with that, I'll answer any questions you may have. Uh, once the restrooms are completed. The town will be able to proceed with BLM and Maricopa County to acquire those rodeo grounds. And make future improvements with the help of our partners, Cave Creek Rodeo Days and, and other organizations. Happy to answer any questions.
Will the installation of these restrooms make it easier for the town to, uh, welcome people to utilize that facility? As a potential income to the town?
Mayor Councilman McGuire, absolutely. Um, we really saw a, you know, we were averaging between. Seventeen and twenty-five events out of that, uh, facility a year. Uh, COVID obviously took a, a big impact on that, but I would say that by and large, uh. One of the, the primary or principal reasons that that area is not utilized more so. Is the, the rest, the public restroom facilities. Um, anybody that's doing an event out there has got to bring in portage ons. That's, that's a pretty substantial. Expense that they've got to do in, in addition to our fees for utilizing those grounds. So yes, this will, this will make that. A much more desirable place to hold events.
So it's, uh, it's, it's really two things. One is it, it facilitates our obtaining that. For the use of the town and with our more, what would I say? Working directly and, and having more options in working with the rodeo committee. And also it, it, uh, facilitates, uh, the town getting more income from the use of that facility.
That's correct. Yeah, any amenities added are going to be.
Thank you. I guess that was your question.
So I would hope also that we're going to start taking a look at how we can improve the parking out there because it's miserable going to the rodeo. I mean, I, I love going to the rodeo, but it was pretty harsh parking. And I, I just think if we're going to rent this out and we're going to do things, we need to take a look between the. Between your compatriot over here and yourself and figure out a way to maybe improve the parking situation. So that in future years, we have plenty of parking and, and we can accommodate larger events. And I th- I think that's in our public interest to do that. Except I know public guy, I know public parking is your, your favorite topic for me.
Well, the mayor, uh, Councilman Rhodes. Uh, having worked with the Cape Creek Rodeo Days organization, volunteered for several years. I was actually in charge of parking out there. So I. I understand it is, it is an issue. We were, the town was able to expand that. Um, at about two acres of, of parking. What this allows us to do, the restrooms. Allows us to move forward with acquisition. And once we acquired, you know, the area around that, we're able to improve it even more for parking.
Yeah, I just think it's a good idea. If we're going to try to rent this out, you're going to get a lot more potential revenue if you have adequate parking. Um, it, you know, I don't want it to turn into the buffalo chip on Friday nights.
I, I have a couple of questions. How long after we build this before we can, we approach BLM? What's, what does that look like? That, that process to get the actual control of grounds? And, and the second part is how many acres are we going to get in addition to what's the parking and the facility itself in that process?
Uh, Mayor, members of council, so the, the total acreage, I believe, is seventy-six. That, uh, Maricopa County could help us, uh, issue a patent on. And then they would deed over, um, I, I. Twenty-five acres? Yeah, I believe it's about twenty-five acres in total. Um, and as far as the process, we have been talking with BLM. They're a federal agency. Um, so it's, it's a little bit different bureaucratic animal than I'm used to in working in, in a local government setting, but. Um, we've, I've had three or four conversations with, with Mr. Jim Anderson with BLM. Um, he's had conversations with RJ with Maricopa County. I think our next step would be, um. Meeting with RJ and seeing what their, what their process looks like to begin the, the patent entitlement on it.
But thi- this fulfills the existing contract. Uh, condition that we construct restaurants out there. That's, that's what, that's what we're doing here tonight is fulfilling that contract.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
I guess that's all. I have anybody else? Questions? Uh, I'm sure there's, yes, there is public comment on this.
No one wishing to speak.
Okay, it, um.
You know, before, can I say something before we vote?
Yes.
There are a number of individuals in this room, Luke, Ernie. Uh, I'm sure I'm not aware of, I should be more aware of others who have given of their time, their dedication to the community. Uh, it's just a hell of a lot of work to put on a rodeo and it's a real credit to the town. And I think we all be. Very, we all should be very grateful to what they have done for the town and for the effort that they have put in. Thanks, Ernie.
Yeah, Mary's back there. Be very quiet. So any other comments from council? Uh, at this point then, I guess we're ready for a, uh, no public comment. Ready for a roll call.
The motion. You can make the motion.
That's three mistakes tonight. I'm, I'm counting.
I'll make the motion. Motion to approve a contract with building by Don Fredericks, Inc. For construction services to build restrooms at the Cave Creek Rodeo Grounds and Memorial Arena. In an amount of up to three hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars.
Second. Mayor, ma'am. Yes, when I, when I first got elected, um. The, it, to- tomorrow is eighteen years since I was sworn in the first time when this council, and that was one of the goals at the time. Was to come up with these, with the ownership, the rodeo grounds. And if, if, if this thing happens while I'm still alive, I'm going to be so thrilled about it. It's just, yeah. It's, it's one of those things that just takes too, way too long. Uh, but yeah, go ahead. That's all I had to say.
Other comment?
My last comment is, uh, not only is it desperately needed out there and hopefully will make huge improvements. But I'm glad to see that Don Fredericks is doing it, a local contractor who does exceptional work. So they should be very nicely done.
Well, I have a comment in this one too. Um, the, you know, the town has a Western history and, uh, to me, the rodeo is the signature. One-time yearly event in town that, that fits all of the criteria we set out for what this town ought to be. And, and we don't have, we have one other park in town, then it's supposed to be across, but this is our town park. It's, we don't have any baseball fields or football or soccer. Uh, but we do have a rodeo arena. It's befitting a town like this to be a little different than, than Phoenix might be, for example. Um, having been a, a, uh, equestrian competitor for years and put on ro- events and rodeo and. Punctured my lung in the Prescott Rodeo Grounds a few years, number of years ago. Uh, I'm, I'm really in favor of this and I, I, I really hope and encourage staff to get the most out of this. And have as many horse events out there as it will handle. Uh, so it becomes a, a, a place that everybody, uh, refers to and knows and. And, uh, it just, uh, brings our town to a different level and we own that darn thing at some point. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Rhodes.
I.
Vice Mayor Ray. Yes, Councilmember Ogerton.
I.
Councilmember Bunch.
Hi.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Mayor Morris.
Hi.
Mr. Mayor. Uh, one more plug, Gateway Desert Awareness Park.
Said two parts. That, that's our second part. Yeah, well, no, I, I, I was thinking it though. Thank you for bringing that up. Uh, we're now on item.
Thank you, Luke.
Five is council discussion approval resolution R twenty twenty-three dash thirteen, adopting a fiscal year twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four. Expenditure limitation and budget for the town. Providing that this resolution shall be effective from and after its passage and approval according to law presented by the finance director. Welcome, Mancy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, the budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four is presented tonight in its final version. With no changes from the tentative budget approved on May sixteenth. The budget was a collaborative effort with assistance and input from the entire staff, council and community members. And I'd like to thank everyone for their contributions to the budget process this year. Because tonight is a public hearing, I would like to go through a quick summary of the budget for the benefit of the town residents that are here tonight. The budget that is before you is tentatively adopted at fifty-six million, five hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars. It is a balanced budget, so revenues and sources equals expenditures and uses. First shown on this chart, um, of the revenues and sources, sources coming in. Um, of this amount of the fifty-six million, five fifty-five, nine sixty-one and consists of thirty-one percent from the general fund. Fifty-eight percent from the utility funds and eleven percent from the special revenue funds. The next slide shows the specific dollar amounts and breakdown by fund type. General fund revenues and sources are seventeen million, three thirty-four, seven ninety-four. And of note is the first line of this table, which shows three million, five eighty-one, two twenty. And of note is the first line of this table, which shows three million, five eighty-one to twenty-four. Of unrestricted fund balance is required to balance the general fund and would be used if the entire general fund budget is spent. This use of fund balance is mostly being used for the major general fund capital initiatives included in the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget. For street paving and improvement projects, which also includes town core pedestrian safety projects and median enhancements. For fire station renovation and improvements, as well as trails, including the town core pathway project. Special revenue funds account for six million, four eighty-four, two fifty-eight. Capital project funds of twenty thousand, eight oh nine and enterprise and our utility funds account for thirty-two million. Seven hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred. The next slide shows the expenditure side of the budget and is broken out by fund type. And then by fund with total general fund expenditures of seventeen million, three eighty-nine, six sixty. Special revenue funds of herf spur cross. Open space acquisition fund and grant fund totaling the four million, seven twenty-six, five oh four. Capital project funds of cave creek water infrastructure and open space and trails totaling twelve thousand, three sixty-six. And the enterprise or utility funds, including wastewater, cave creek water and desert hills water. Of thirty-four, four twenty-seven, four thirty-one. The next table shows the differences by fund type between budget years. The general fund expenditure budget increased three million, nine twenty-one, one hundred and sixty dollars. Due to a change in procedure of moving expenditures from the capital improvement fund to the department budgets. So that it, so the expenditures are reflected where funds are being spent and will be placed in service. And also due to an additional three million over last year's budget being spent on the major general fund capital initiatives. Um, that were just discussed. The special revenue funds budget decreased slightly over the prior year. Due to nothing being budgeted in the open space acquisition fund for twenty twenty-four. The capital project fund budget decreased significantly this year due to the change in the procedure that I just mentioned. Um, moving the capital expenditures to the department budgets in the general fund. And the utility funds or the enterprise funds has a significant increase in budget of fourteen million. Fourteen point seven million from the prior fund. From the prior, um, fund year due to budgeted appropriation increase in the, uh, twenty twenty-three. With a loan fund of almost nine million related to the Phoenix Interconnect Capital Project. Three million in grant funds budgeted in Cave Creek Water for the congressionally directed spending grant applied for of two and a half million. And the water smart grant that will be received in fiscal year twenty twenty-four of the five hundred thousand. Or half million and an additional one point four budgeted and additional capital improvement projects and wastewater. Cave Creek Water and Desert Hills Water, not related to the Phoenix Interconnect Project. The next slide, um, shows for you a graphic view across all of our funds of the differences between budget years. There were slight increases in, um, the personnel cost category and contracts and services. The personnel costs increase is due to a, uh, six percent market adjustment that was added as well as two and a half percent. Uh, that was set aside for retention and recruitment of, um, town employees. The contracts and services, uh, category increase is mainly due to the increase in the MCS, MC. MS, I'm sorry, MCSO, contract for law enforcement and the Daisy Mountain Contract for Fire Services. As well as the bulk water expense for, um, Desert Hills purchase of water. The major increases in the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget. Um, on this slide, as you can see, are due to the capital expenditures category. That's the, um, fourth line over the biggest, um, increase. Um, and that capital expenditure cap- category includes. Um, projects for street paving and, um, improvement projects that the town is significantly behind on completing. Um, the town core pedestrian safety and media enhancement projects. Fire station renovation and improvements, restrooms for the rodeo grounds and our fleet, um, purchases for twenty twenty-four. And, um, the capital expenditures for the Phoenix Interconnect Project, which is the next set of graphs over. Um, is, uh, displayed there too, which shows that, uh, nine million dollar increase over the, uh, prior year. But the budget is, um, a plan and these expenditures are included in the budget to have an appropriation, um, to spend. For these projects, if authorized by council. If council decides later not to prove the capital contracts, when they come forward, the money remains in the fund. And will close back to fund balance to be looked at again in the next, uh, fiscal year's budget. So what I've presented is at a, um, high level summary. On the town's website, um, there are links to the full budget document, which includes additional operational detail for each department. Um, area and fund. There is also the Arizona Auditor General official budget forms, um, that schedules A through G. Uh, that are posted on the town's website as required by, um, Arizona state law. These forms, uh, represent the town's official approved budget document and is what is being presented. Um, as part of the resolution to council tonight for approval. So the town manager and staff request council approve the budget for the town of Cave Creek for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, beginning July first of twenty twenty-three.
Questions from council? We've, we've seen this many, many times already, so there probably aren't many questions. Um, this, uh. We have public comment. Hearing. Oh, thank you, thank you. Uh, I hereby open the public hearing on the.
Yes.
On the budget. Thank you, former mayor.
David Phelps?
Please start. Thank you. And this three minutes, I'd like to go over what you guys think I'm up here for. No, I'm just kidding. I'm still here for preservation funds. I know I've been the only one in the town. That's come to every meeting and asked for preservation funding, but I really think we need to consider motion. Make the change that we did in twenty seventeen reversed. Let's start funding preservation again. Funding opportunities, the need for funding for preservation is coming along. Uh, the opportunities will be here soon. And I think we should be ready with a bigger budget as we can possibly get. I don't think there's a lot of arm twisting that should be needed, but it seems like, uh. That one little thing can't get, get done with this administration. It's kind of scary, sad and I get it. Okay, thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps.
No additional speakers.
Okay, I close the hearing. We're ready for a motion to adopt.
Mr. Mayor, before you do, can we just get a staff response to that last discussion on the preservation? And I know we've had this in some previous, sorry. I know we've had this at some previous budget meetings, but, and I'm not cer- sure I understand. I know that the. One fund is retiring and the spur cross monies are being used differently, but is there anything that we can still do this late this evening on this issue? Either voting on a specific motion or committing to a hearing around the corner on it.
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember, um, it's back to the fund retiring that the fund that's retiring. I believe you're referring to, um, was a development fee that we no longer have. So, so that's a kind of a separate topic. Um, but when the council adopted the tentative budget at the last council meeting, it set the cap for the budget. And so, um, what that does is if you want to increase funds for. Uh, open space, you would have to reduce. Uh, you know, the, the cap of the total budget is set, so you would have to reduce somewhere else in that. But. Um, what, um, Mr. Phelps is requesting would be an ordinance change. Um, on where the sales tax funds would be allocated. That, that we're currently collecting.
And I think that that is worth a discussion. At, at a future council meeting, uh, because it is a different council. And we do have different priorities and we have caught up to a large degree on our sinkhole of a water utility. So, um, I think it's worth a discussion and I'd like to see that on a future agenda if possible.
And that doesn't affect the budget in any way. Having the discussion and changing the ordinance is just collecting revenues. It doesn't affect. The expenditure limitation that you're setting with the budget, so.
I think it's a good idea also because we're reviewing a lot of the ordinances anyways. So I think there's just another ordinance we review.
It's just, it's not a zoning ordinance.
Yeah, well, but I mean, we're reviewing other ordinances. We've, we've done in, in each session, the, the guidance to staff on. On the, uh, short-term rentals and other things. So I just think this is another ordinance that we ought to take a look at.
Mr. Mayor, to the point of irritation, so I apologize, but, um, is there any tentative support? For delaying the gateway project for one year and taking those monies and giving it a seed bunny to start something with preservation right now? And I didn't come prepared to propose that tonight, but I just keep wondering. Those monies that are allocated to help people that don't live in Cave Creek as opposed to a preservation fund that could be used towards the state land departments.
Well, we, we can do that during the year. We, we have flexibility, as I understand, we can do that during the year. Uh, we can move money around. We can't exceed. This is a, this is a expenditure limitation, but we can move money around during the year. Priorities change.
Mayor, that is correct. Um, but I, I want to point out that the majority of the funding, if you are going to, in terms of expenditure authority. If you are going to expend some of those funds, the revenue to cover that is primarily in grants, I believe. So we would have to receive a grant. It's offset by grants, so it's not.
That project is.
That project, yeah.
But if we look at the actual amount of money that the taxpayers are paying on that project, should the grant money come through. Is a fairly significant number that we could put towards preservation. And I don't want to force the point this evening, but. We just, the process moved pretty quickly this year and it didn't seem like it avoided, it didn't afford a lot of opportunity for those of us that are new. To try to get some adjustments. There's a lot of pork for staff. There's not a lot of pork up here for the council. So I've made my point. I don't want to be more obnoxious than usual, but on the gateway project, I just wish that we could have it. In a priority order that would be, uh, determined by the council, not by the staff.
I think that, um, uh, when and if we get the grant and it comes before us is when we could decide if we want to move forward with it. That would probably be the most appropriate time, I think.
Yeah, I don't think the two projects are connected. They're both, they're, they're separates. Isn't that what, what you said, Carrie, that, that, the, the gateway is a grant? And it, it's, it lives or dies.
Money is the staff is requesting for expenditure. So.
Uh, Mayor, Councilmember, it's, it's really just comes down to an expenditure authority. Are you going to spend money this year? If you'd like to switch that to open space, are you going to buy open space land with revenue? And. I, I don't, I don't remember the exact, exact number that we would then have available if you change that. What, what was a dollar a month?
Or gateway?
Yeah.
Um, the grant money was seventy and the, um. General fund money was a hundred, so a hundred and seventy in total.
For the first year.
For fiscal year twenty-four.
Right, and that, that's in the CIP and I, I would suggest that when you revisit the CIP. Towards the end of this year, that you would be able to reprioritize your CIP projects and either move that out. Or take it out of the CIP and then all of the funds would be re. Year one would be different. You can reprioritize what project you're gonna, um, funnel into year one of the budget.
So there's flexibility.
Absolutely, lots of flexibility.
Uh, councilperson Augurton, I think you used the term pork in as a, uh, in humor, I hope. Because, uh, in the fifteen years I've been on council, I think that they, the. Uh, staff in particular and, and even the council has been very careful to, uh, avoid doing things that, uh. Might justify that term, but hopefully your comment was made in chest.
Mr. Mayor, the Councilman McGuire, uh, I will not be supporting budget tonight because the total figure and the process. Doesn't seem to be as good as we might be able to make and, uh. I just would like to see an orientation in the future that comes back to the basic. Um, things that are important to the residents of the community. And it, my vote's not needed anyway, so it's academic. But, um, I would like to see a heightened emphasis in the future. With the council as part of the discussion process before the numbers are put together and the votes are there to automatically approve them, so that's all.
Your comment is well taken.
Other comments?
So I'd just more like to thank Mitzi for doing a great job. I know it's hard, herding seven cats plus, you know, forty or fifty. Other people in, in the town hall. Um, I too have some reservations about the budget, not because you've done anything wrong, but just because of the process we followed. I've already talked to the mayor and the town manager about it. And we're looking at, at changing and making it better and making it more efficient and making it more open in the future. So I, I commend that, but I still have some reservations on the way this one was done.
Um, I'm gonna make my usual speech on this budget. First of all, uh, I, just, I'm repeating what Mitzi said to a large extent, but this is a balanced budget. We're not spending, we're not spending, uh, money that we don't have. This is money that we have and that the, the wisdom of. Uh, councils long before I were here to, uh, develop the sales tax, uh, revenue base of the town is, is paying off big time. Um, and this is an expenditure limit. We can't spend any more money than this here. And I think we're gonna hear in a little while, this year's budget is also putting money in the bank. Um, so what are we getting for that fifty-six million dollars? Well, let's just talk about it because, uh, there is no pork in this. Um, we're fixing the water companies. We all like water. This town does not exist if the water system doesn't work. We're putting a backup in to a very risky, single pipeline that connects us to, uh, CAP water. Long overdue. We're fixing decades of. Underfunded maintenance for that water system. Uh, we're making the sewer reliable. Uh, the sewer is, uh, essentially the gathering system is being rebuilt, uh, with the funds that we're putting in here today. That is absolutely essential for this town. The third thing we're doing is we're catching up on roads. The roads have been under maintained. We should have been spending million, a million and a half a year and we haven't. And, uh, we've gone to three-year program to catch up on the road, so we have something to drive our cars on. We're protecting this town with medical, some of the best medical in the country, fire protection. We're adding our new fire engine this year and upgrading the fire department. We're doing that without any new taxes. And we're protecting people, pedestrian safety, walkways, things like that. Now, if you're catching any kind of trend here. These are existential issues that this budget is solving. Existential, people exist because of what we're doing here and it's important. We're doing it balanced. We're doing it economically and responsibly. So we can talk about the process. We can talk about pork. This is a budget that meets this town's needs. And I am going to enthusiastically support. I think staff has done a wonderful job on this. Um, and it is, they can be proud of it and I'm proud of staff for what they've done on this. With that, let's have our vote.
Motion.
Excuse me.
Motion to adopt resolution R two O two-three dash thirteen. A resolution of the mayor and council of the town of Cave Creek, adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four. Expenditure limitation and budget for the town. And providing that this resolution shall be effective from and after its passage and approval according to law.
Second.
One last word I would also like to say, uh, in, in terms of preservation. We had a spectacular year in twenty twenty-three. We preserved thirty point six acres along with Maricopa County. And that's something to be very proud of. And so it's not like we haven't used our money wisely for preservation. We have, and I'm proud of that. And so we, we can look at new. Systems, new processes, new changes. I'm happy to do that, but I want to go on the record that we had a good. That we had a good year and we have a lot to be proud of with preservation.
I'll just second that. Well, other people to speak?
You know, I I think there may be a point in the future at which we identify. Uh, open space that we can afford. And that is appropriate and hopefully uh, we will please everyone in the audience by making uh, sound decisions. I think uh, what the vice mayor has said is 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 so true. Uh, Mister, if I may, Mister Greenberg in purchasing his property, I've had a good many discussions with him. And uh, it it. One might say that he has saved the town over a million dollars. It's his property. It's his investment. But I I saw a commitment, I see a commitment there to what Cave Creek is about. And uh, I think at some point in the future, probably. We may be able to cite places where we need to do more preservation. At this point. Uh, I don't know of a good investment that we can make, but should that come up in the future, I hope that this and future councils. Will uh, endorse uh, extension of the of our open space as appropriate.
Other comments?
Vice Mayor Ray? Yes, councilmember Augurton?
No.
Councilmember Bunch?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
No.
Mayor Morris?
Hi. Motion passes four-two. We are now on. Uh, I have number seven. Excuse me.
Six.
Six, six, uh, yes, and uh, we have slightly changed this, so I'm I'm gonna be, I'm gonna read the these things. We have some changes to this. The council discussion possible proof resolution number R twenty twenty-three dash fourteen, the resolution of the mayor and council. Of the town of Cave Creek, Arizona, appointing the town of Cave Creek town manager Kerry Dyrek as chief fiscal officer. Of the town for the purpose of submitting the annual expenditure limitation report. To the Arizona Auditor General's office for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Uh, presented by the finance director.
Okay, mayor and members of council, uh, this is a state statute requirement as uh, the mayor just stated. And the appointment by council is required to be made by July thirty-first um, each year. Every year, the town prepares an alternative expenditure limitation report that is audited and required to be filed with the Arizona Auditor General's office. The person that is appointed by council as the chief fiscal officer is the person who signs this report and attests to its accuracy. Town manager Kerry Dyrek has been appointed to this position for many years and staff recommends her appointment again. For the purpose of signing and submitting the town's fiscal year twenty twenty-four annual expenditure limitation report to the auditor general's office.
Questions from council? Public comment?
No public comment.
Um, in that case, I I will make the motion here. Uh, motion to approve resolution number R twenty twenty-three dash fourteen, the resolution of the mayor and town council, town of Cave Creek, Arizona. Appointing the town of Cave Creek town manager Kerry Dyrek as chief fiscal officer of the town. For the purpose of submitting the annual expenditure limitation report to the auditor general's office for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Second. Comment?
We've always have to do it.
You have a comment from council? Uh, this is not fiscal, even though it says fiscal. So we can do a roll call? Okay, um, yeah, do a roll call.
Councilmember Augurton?
Hi.
Councilmember Bunch?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Ray?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Hi. Uh, motion passes six zero. Item number seven, a presentation of the quarterly financial report presented by the financial director. You're getting a good workout tonight.
Mayor Morrison, town council, um, I will be presenting the third quarter financial report for the current fiscal year twenty twenty-three. I will start by presenting the uh, financial information for the major um, general government funds. And follow with the financial report for the um, enterprise funds. The first slide shows the town's general fund revenues as of March thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. The actual revenue collected is ten million four thirty-eight to twenty-seven, which is eighty-six point one percent of the adopted budget. The next slide is a graph view where the black line represents the budget and the blue line represents the actual revenues. And shows the town is tracking tracking slightly above the seventy-five percent target. Three quarters of um, the way through the fiscal year. The next slide shows the breakout of the general fund revenues. The town has collected a little over seven and a half million dollars in local taxes or eighty-two point nine percent of budget. Local fees are trending above budget at a million two fifty-five, two fifteen or a hundred and thirty-one percent of budget. Which is mostly due to interest income outperforming budget in that category and state revenues are at a million four forty-two, one twenty-nine. And are right on track with budget at seventy-six point nine percent. Miscellaneous revenues of two twenty-four, eight thirty-four are above budget at ninety-eight point two percent. Due to um, the insurance recovery monies. Um, of eighty-five thousand five seventy-five uh, received for the weather damage um, that occurred at the rodeo grounds. This pie trap, pie tr- pie graph, sorry, pie chart graph. Um, on the next slide shows uh, seventy-two percent um, of the town's general fund revenues are from local taxes, which are the town's sales taxes. And construction sales taxes. Fourteen or percent are from state revenue, which is the town's portion of state funding for its state income taxes, state sales taxes and vehicle license tax. And twelve percent are from local fees, which are the fees the town collects for its services. And the remaining two percent uh, represent uh, the miscellaneous revenues the town receives. This next slide shows general fund operating expenditures uh, through the end of the third quarter. For the um, general fund, all departments are um, on target with budget seventy-five percent through the uh, fiscal year. Moving from operating uh, to capital, this next slide shows that the general fund expenditures through the end of third quarter. Are um, all department capital expenditures are trending. Below budget and additional expenditures are expected in the last quarter of the fiscal year as um, our general fund capital projects complete. And are paid for. That wraps it up for the general fund, but um, in summary, the general fund is on target with budget and in good financial shape. As of the end of the third quarter of um, our current fiscal year twenty twenty-three. And moving forward and looking at other major um, general governmental funds. We have two, um, HERF is the first one. And the town has received um, in HERF, two hundred and seventy-six thousand. Two hundred and seventy dollars or seventy-one point two percent of state HERF revenues through third quarter. And has expenditures of three thousand two seventy-one year to date. With the remaining HERF expenditures to be recorded in the last quarter um, of the fiscal year as our uh, street projects uh, complete. Spur Cross is the second uh, major other general fund and it received a million three forty-one, two eleven or eighty-seven point four percent. Of uh, local taxes through third quarter. And Spur Cross has expended a hundred and sixty-two thousand or seventy-five percent of the budget. To Maricopa County for um, administration of the Spur Cross Park. And moving um, from the general government funds to the enterprise funds. The first enterprise shown here is the wastewater fund. Year-to-date revenues and operating expenses are on target three quarters through the fiscal year. Revenues collected are two million three oh nine, two twenty-four. And operating expenses are a million sixty-seven thousand four eighty-one. Capital project expenses for wastewater of three hundred and thirty-seven thousand one fifty-six are slightly under budget at the end of the third quarter. The inlet screen replacement and the headworks and basin repairs projects. Along with the start of the integrated utility master plan for the wastewater treatment plant. Account for the forty-five point six percent of the capital projects budget expense through the third quarter. This next slide shows um, a graphic presentation of the wastewater revenue and expenditures year um, to date. The revenues are at the two point three and the ex- uh, expenditure expenditures to date, both operating and capital there are at a million four oh four. Cave Creek Water um, is shown here um, next and revenues collected through third quarter are three million seven sixty-one, one ninety-two. Or seventy-nine percent of the revenue budget. Without grant revenues or transfers from other funds. Additionally, Cave Creek Water received um, the state and local fiscal recovery funds from the grant fund in the amount of a million nine forty-nine, seven seven seven. This revenue um, is now a hundred percent of budget and it will be spent on capital expenses related to the Phoenix Interconnect project. Starting July first of twenty twenty-three. All expenses are tracking below budget seventy-five percent through the fiscal year with operating expenses at sixty-six point four percent. The water meter replacement and plant maintenance capital projects, along with the start of the integrated utility master plan. Um, for Cave Creek Water expenses underway. Account for the twenty-eight point nine percent and the Phoenix Interconnect project expenses. At fifty-one point four percent of budget. And this is the uh, graphic presentation for Cave Creek Water revenues and expenses to date. Um, the revenues at five point seven million and the expenses at three point six, three point seven rounded. And the presentation, um. Here for uh, the next um, enter the next enterprise or utility fund is the financial information for the Desert Hills Water Fund. A year-to-date revenues through third quarter are two million four fifty-five, seven hundred and thirteen thousand. Or thirteen dollars or seventy point six percent of budget. And operating expenses of a million three oh four, two ninety-nine are tracking slightly below budget at seventy-three percent. Capital expenses for Desert Hills at the end of third quarter are sixty-one thousand seventy-six dollars or twenty-seven percent of the budget. And represent expenses for the annual pipeline improvement program project, along with the start of the. Integrated Utility Master Plan for Desert Hills Water. And this final slide um, shows the graphic presentation for Desert Hills Water revenues and expenditures. With the year-to-date revenues at two point four and the expenditures at one point three. Uh, this is all I have for uh, third quarter twenty twenty-three financial report and I'm happy to answer or take any questions you might have.
I'd have just one, Mitzi, it's so this is the end of the third quarter, you know, um, and we're about seventy-five percent of budget. Do you expect that by the end of the year we'll be closer to ninety percent? Do you have any kind of an estimate?
For um.
For budget expenditures?
Expenditures in both the. The general fund?
Yes.
And the enterprise funds?
Yes.
Um, I would say. Yes, we would be probably around ninety percent. I, we won't be exceeding and um, I would say slightly. Under the hundred percent threshold.
Okay, but we're close. So we're we're budgeting fairly accurately.
Correct.
Very good, thank you.
And the capital projects are coming in um, as this last quarter is progressing, the projects are completing. So a lot of those capital expenses will hit this last quarter.
When will you make your fourth quarter presentation?
Um, I think, I believe it'll be in August.
August.
August, very good, yeah.
Thank you.
So this, this is going to be another year where the uh, this year's current budget versus what we actually spend are going to be radically different. Like they have in the past, one of your slides earlier, I think. Since it showed something like forty million with two hundred and thirty or something of or twenty-three. Oh, my gosh, you know what I'm trying to say? The Caffer's gonna look really good for the, yeah.
Our budget to actual statements, you mean in the Caffer, yes.
Yeah, that's what the mayor was talking about, actually adding money to the coppers before, before it's done, yeah.
Correct.
Other questions? We're actually going to put money in the bank again this year?
Um, it looks that way, yes, at this point. The final figures for that I don't quite have yet, but.
There's a headline. It's that we're putting money in the bank, not taking it out.
Out.
And and that's thanks to our sales tax dollars.
Correct. Those are tracking slightly ahead of where those were budgeted last year, so. Those have come in a little bit ahead of schedule, slightly ahead of schedule, so.
Anything else from council? There is probably comment on this?
No public comment.
All right, I think we've completed the agenda for this evening, so we're looking for a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Hi.
Adjourned.